All right, it is 4:03. You want to go ahead and get started with the presentation? So this is the AMATS Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee's special meeting, February 27th, 2024, to receive a briefing on the Seward-Glen Connection Pell Study. And with that, our presenter can take it away.
Hi, so my name is Edith McKee. I work for HDR. HDR is the architecture and engineering firm that was selected by the DOT to develop the Seward-Glen Pell Connection Study. And we have Galen Jones, he's here attending the meeting as well. He's the DOT project manager for this project. And John McPherson is our HDR project manager, but he is traveling today, so I will be leading this presentation. So we'd like to thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity that you set up a special meeting to allow us to come and present to you today. So, thank you. Let's see here. Oh, I thought I had it all worked out. Let's see. Okay, there we go. So, this is a, a Pell is a planning and environmental linkage study. It's kind of a mid-ground between planning and NEPA. It allows us to look at concepts and engage a really robust public involvement process. And it, and I kind of think of it as, like, we're doing a lot of the analysis that would happen ahead of time and getting a lot of that community feedback so that we make sure that the right project gets advanced into the NEPA process and becomes the project and gets into the planning documents. So as part of this process, a lot of the planning meets the NEPA standards. You know, we are engaging the public, we're engaging stakeholders, we're working with tribes, we're working with agencies, and we're working a lot with the public. So. Kind of, so like I said, we, you know, we're working with different stakeholders, we're working with tribes, we're working with agencies during the Pell process. And throughout, we've had several public meetings. It allows us to kind of accelerate project delivery. So we do a lot of that preliminary screening, we identify a lot of the different preliminary impacts. It gives us a lot of, of that flexibility, like it says here on the slide, to make sure that the right project is what gets advanced into the next phase. So the, the Seward-Glen Connection Pell Study area covers a pretty large area of Anchorage. You can kind of see here, it covers from the Port of Alaska, it extends out to Brigaw and the Glen Highway. We go as far south as Fireweed, and we go to the boundary of Elmendorf to the north. So this red boundary is the study area, green are parklands. This red dotted line is the existing port connection, and this is the existing highway corridor with the Seward Highway, Gamble-Ingrah, Fifth Avenue, and the Glen Highway. Our study objectives are, you know, we're looking to reduce conflicts within the corridor, improve safety is a huge component of our objectives. We're looking to reduce that conflict that occurs of the, you know, we have high volumes of traffic that are moving through Anchorage, and they have a lot of conflict with that Ingrah-Gamble-Fairview area. And so we're definitely looking to improve how that works for everybody, and that means all modes. So that's freight, that's vehicles, that's pedestrians, that's cyclists, in, in all, all means and methods of making your way through this area of the project. We're also recognizing, the project recognizes that Fairview has been significantly impacted historically. And, and we're definitely engaging that, that community very heavily to see what their final vision looks like once this project is completed, and how we could implement the adopted plans. So this, you know, I mean, as everybody who lives, works, passes through Anchorage, recognizes that traveling through the Ingrah-Gamble area, there are a lot of things here that the team is looking to balance and, and challenges that we're encountering, you know, improving the safety, recognizing that there are regional and local traffic conflicts that we want to address, looking again at all of the users, recognizing that pedestrians and bicyclists are just as important in this corridor as vehicles and freight. It is part of the national highway system, so we do want to preserve how that functions and works. Again, making sure that people can move through the area safely and efficiently. We are looking at how the port is accessed by freight and other, there's also Ship Creek Trail Connection down there that we're hoping to make work with this options, too. The livability of the neighborhood, so recognizing again that Fairview has been significantly impacted, and how do we bring back quality of life for that, for that neighborhood? You know, we've met with them, we've heard from them. They want, you know, that ability to, to walk in their neighborhood and be connected to sidewalks, pathways, and trails. So to do that, you know, we've, there's the Gamble Street redevelopment, the Ingrah Greenway, improvements to Peds and Bikes, and then the Reconnecting Communities grant. So in, in this kind of, you know, it is another way that we say what the focus of the design team has been, which is, you know, improving local travel, improving non-motorized travel, and again, the livability of the community, connection to the Fairview Greenway, Ship Creek Coastal Trail, and Chester Creek Trails. You know, all of the options, look at pedestrian bridges, tunnels to cross major roadways. Again, looking at how we reduce that conflict between freight and regular traffic, and reducing travel conflicts between vehicles, cars, and pedestrians, and then, of course, improving regional traffic and blending in and bringing in all of the different adopted plans.
Hey, Edith, this is Galen. Could I jump in just real quick on this slide?
Yeah, please. Would you like me to back up, or do you want me to stand?
Yeah, that'd be great. On the last slide. Yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, Edith did a great job summarizing this. I just wanted to point out on that last slide, that before we jump into the alternatives and cross-sections and things that, just to emphasize what it says on the top there, that when the study team was developing all of these alternatives, these were the types of things that we tried to accomplish with every single one. So we tried to check all six of these boxes with each of the alternatives. Some do a better job than others, and that kind of ties back with the whole balancing the challenges thing. So that's, I just wanted to throw that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this is my first time doing the presentation, so Galen, please jump in if I miss something, because I'm a little nervous. So I appreciate the support. Thanks. Okay, so I'll jump ahead. So local roadway examples, so these are typical sections that the design team is working on, and that we are hoping that we get public feedback, because that is how the public feedback and, and that permanent public record of the comments received by the team is how we advance and incorporate the, the ideas that are most valued by the community. So I can't emphasize enough that that permanent public record has a lot of value in how the team advances a concept. So for Main Street Gamble, this upper box shows, you know, two-way traffic with parking available in the roadway, pedestrian facilities on sidewalks. The next one down is another Main Street example, which has the, the bidirectional traffic, one lane of parking, and then has separated bike and ped facilities. And it'd look a little bit like West Fourth Avenue in Anchorage. A Warnerf is, really gives bikes and Peds the priority in the roadway space. It does have parking. This is a really nice example of one that, you know, has a lot of amenities adjacent to it. It's very walkable, it's very bikable, it's very pedestrian-friendly. We have one of these in Anchorage. It's on F Street. It's over there by, oh goodness, the name of the, the humpies is over here, and Willowah, thank you. My brain just dumped it. But, you know, then they can close the street, they can have block parties, they can have events, they, you know, they're closing it for some of the Ferandi activities right now. So, and this would be on Hyder is one, is the location this is being considered, which is between Ingrah and Gamble. And then we're looking at complete street concepts for Ingrah, which, so this top one has a two-way left turn lane, and it has traffic traveling on both directions. So cars leaving the road use that center turn lane to, to move themselves out of the travelway, and it reduces car-to-car conflict. The other option we're looking at is, you know, two-directional travel in the center, and then you have a dedicated cycle track and a sidewalk on each side. This could look a lot like the reconstructed portion of Spinard Road.
Just to throw in a little tidbit here, so the existing right-of-way on each of these three roadways is 60 feet. So these are, like Edith said, these are just examples of things that could fit within that 60-foot right-of-way. And we wanted to provide some different examples because there's a lot of different ways you can kind of slice that pie, you know? If you want wider sidewalks, well, then maybe you can afford as wide of bike lanes or so on. So without purchasing right-of-way and impacting the community businesses, residential relocations, things like that, these are examples of some things that you could potentially fit. But there, the, the options are endless.
And again, another opportunity for people to comment and say, "I really like this one," or "I don't like this one," or "Have you considered adding this?" So we will, we would appreciate that feedback. So for the non-motorized connections, where we, what we're focusing on is, you know, making room for that complete street. So again, it's using that 60 feet that Galen mentioned to fit a complete street concept, to put a Main Street in, to provide those regional trail connections, to, you know, improve safety on our local street connections, and to look at that Warnerf, which would really create some really nice community space. Um, so what I'm going to start walking you through, and I might walk through these a little bit quick, but Galen, please stop me, pause me if there's something you'd really like me to emphasize. So on the E here, this is the non-motorized. So what we have done with the options, and there's a lot more information on the project webpage, and I would really encourage everybody to go, because you can really zoom in on these and take a long time and, and look at them. But this gray area is a potential main line. The pink here are our proposed path sidewalk connections, and we've identified which transportation plan that they align with. The blue are regional trail connections, so we're showing how you might connect from the Chester Creek Trail up to Ship Creek Trail. We also are showing local roads, port connections, but the emphasis of these are the non-motorized, and how we could reconnect Fairview across Ingrah and Gamble. And this is alternative A.
And Edith, this is what the highway lowered, right, or sunk? Is that alternative A?
Um.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
So different, different sections of each alternative would be depressed versus at grade. And with this one in particular, if you're headed northbound, the freeway would be at grade in the Chester Creek area. There'd be a new bridge over Chester Creek. That bridge could provide the ability for the creek to go back to natural settings, would also have a passage underneath. The, the Chester Creek Greenbelt Trail would pass underneath the highway at this location and be in a much more open, comfortable, bright undercrossing as opposed to the tunnel that's there now, or other tunnels you see around town. So, so yeah, like Edith was saying, the, the middle of that gray section is the freeway here, the proposed freeway connection.
And it, the depression begins at 15th, and then it daylights right about here, and then it's depressed again right about here, and then daylights again at the Airport Heights intersection.
Yes. So this alternative basically follows Hyder, curves around to the north, and follows to the north of Third Avenue. Third Avenue would still be an active street and would not be impacted. And then goes underneath Reeve, underneath Commercial, underneath Mountain View, and then connects back to an at-grade or surface-level connection at the existing Glen Highway in the northeast. And we've shown a couple of different options for the trail connection here, and these have, the reason they're on the north side, there are three options. And because this study incorporates the investigation of connections from the Port of Alaska to the national highway system, we have three alternatives for this freeway connection alternative. And so the Chester Creek, Ship Creek Trail Connection could potentially go along any of those connections. So the idea would be to grade-separate them over the railroad tracks for the, for the top or the right two options up there, and then the left one that goes along First Avenue, which called Port Option 1, that one would be at grade or over the railroad tracks, like existing conditions. And there would be grade separations underneath 15th Avenue, you know, pedestrian undercrossing.
Are there any other questions about Alt A, or I can jump, and we can always come back to them, too, after we walk through a couple of these? Nope. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and advance to all, oh.
I was just going to point out that the, the Magenta Connections, those would be like sidewalks on those that you saw that were shown in the cross-sections on the previous slide. So the Main Street or the Complete Street, those would be sidewalks on either side of those types of roadways. And those are shown currently in, in the adopted plans.
And if you go to the project webpage, we've called out the different adopted plans that we incorporated into each of the non-motorized alternatives. See here. So Alt B, and, and this kind of has a similar legend. So the main line is the gray outline in this scenario. The pink lines are the bike and ped type connections. The blue dash line is the trail connection. And then like Galen was talking about, we've looked at different opportunities for connecting freight to the port. So, and some of these could be interchanged with other concepts, so we just wanted to show that we've looked at a lot of different potential options. So Alt B is on, it's on Ingrah, whereas Alt A was on Hyder, but it follows a similar path and has similar features.
Would this be depressed as well on the B?
Yes. So it has, it has, it, this one is depressed from 15th, just before 15th, it begins the depression. And instead of daylighting over here, it stays that way, and daylights again over there by Airport Heights. So.
I think a unique feature about this one, this is Galen, is that the trail connection would go along Hyder. And it would, Hyder would, under this alternative, have that Warnerf type of cross-section. So really pedestrian-friendly, basically vehicles are really only on it to get to their parking spot, so they're going really slow. And those yellow rectangles that you see along the blue line are grade-separated crossings, so trail crossings. Currently in the MTP 2050, there's a trail crossing that goes under 15th. And so we've, we've shown that here. There's, because of the, the way the ramps and the freeway have to connect and to make those connections at 15th Avenue for vehicles, there's another trail connection that's south of 15th that would likely go under, just by the way, the natural topography of the, the road is, is going upwards there, or the natural topography is going up a hill there, that it would make sense for the, the trail to go underneath the road. And then you'll see those yellow rectangles along Hyder. Those could be tunnels or over crossings, but the idea is that those streets are all signalized, they have a decent amount of traffic. So we'd want that, that trail connection to be mostly free-flowing and not have to stop and fight a bunch of traffic to, to cross it. So to, to make it safer, it would have those grade-separated crossings, so a tunnel or a pedestrian overpass.
Yep. Okay. Uh, this is Alt A-B. So A-B is, is similar to the improvements in alternative B. B-1 has an Airport Heights interchange and routing from A to reduce commercial impacts along Fifth Avenue and a depressed alignment on Ingrah Street to separate regional and local traffic and reduce conflicts. So again, this puts the main line on Ingrah. We show the trail connection from the Chester Creek Trail to Ship Creek. So these different port connections are similar to what we showed in Option A, where the, the trail connection to Ship Creek could use any of these three routes. The port connection could utilize any of these three routes. So it kind of combines, for the main line, it kind of combines A and B. It is similar to A in that the depression starts around 15th, it daylights over here, kind of in the middle of this curve. And then it is depressed again by Reeve, and then daylights again over by Airport Heights. But this one, you can also see that there's extensive additional bike and pedestrian facilities along Fifth Avenue, connecting into Mountain View, paralleling the Glen Highway. And then the, again, that pedestrian, like, you know, Main Street feature, complete street feature on Gamble, and the Warnerf on Hyder.
And when you see those pink boxes, those are bridges that would accommodate vehicles and pedestrians. So they would have pedestrian facilities on them. Just so everybody's clear on those pink boxes, the, the road that includes sidewalks would go along, go over or under the freeway there. And on those local roadways that have pedestrian accommodations, it does, if, if we're not showing a pink line, it doesn't mean they don't have pedestrian accommodations. It just means that they're all already there, and they aren't shown in the MTP as a new project. So these pink lines represent new projects that are shown, outlined in one of the local plans.
And again, all of these maps are on the project webpage, and you can, you can zoom in. I'm trying to point to where some of these features that Galen is mentioning are within the map, so that if you do go to the project webpage, you can kind of zoom in and focus and see how they would work with what we're proposing. But A-B 2 is, is similar, but we, instead of, it pushes out onto Third Avenue. So this is the most notable difference between A-B 1 and A-B 2. It does still, so it begins kind of the, for the main line, you begin that depressed freeway here. It's, it stays, and then it stays depressed until you get to Airport Heights. So it's a little bit different in, in that we go to Third and we stay depressed. Again, we're showing the potential opportunities for bike and ped facilities, that trail connection, a variety of port connections. These are the same port connections that were shown in alternative A. So the most notable difference between A-B 1 and A-B 2 is, is probably this feature right here.
Hey, Edith, it looks like Lindsay has a question.
Oh, thank you, because I can't see that when I'm in the presentation. Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, I was just about to jump in. Hi, everyone. And sorry to be late. But just, so folks know, I do, you know, have, 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 have looked and thought a lot about this, but I haven't had a chance to actually talk to the project team about these different alternatives. And so I just have a few questions on, especially A-B 1 and A-B 2. So, one, the regional trail has those different options to the port, and I guess just any of the alternatives have so many different options to the port, not just for the non-motorized, you know, the regional trail, but also for the freight access. And so I was wondering if you guys could speak to why there are so many options and what kinds of considerations you all went through. And then more broadly on A-B 1 and 2, can you explain, like, the shift between Third and Fifth, and why there is so much emphasis on that? I was thinking that these alternatives would have Ingrah or Hyder and those different connections, but they are all aligned on Ingrah. So just wondering about that consideration and why the A-B alternatives are, are both aligned on Ingrah.
I can speak to the port connections to start with. So we wanted to show out, throw out some different options for the port connection. That way, it was a starting point for our engagement with the freight community, so the Alaska Trucking Association, the Freight Advisory Committee, and just basically have a conversation with them, which, which we actually had a meeting with the, well, we presented the Freight Advisory Committee, and then we had a meeting last week with the Alaska Trucking Association and some other key freight stakeholders. That was really productive, got to learn a lot about their constraints and kind of which routes they would prefer. Some of them weren't even on, we didn't even have them really penciled in yet. So we kind of knew that the freight routes were pretty rough. So they'll, part of the next steps will be doing some refinement with these alternatives before we go to screening, before we score these alternatives. And I think some of that refinement will definitely be with the freight routes, just because they were a little bit rough. We didn't get as much, have, have a lot of engagement with them prior to showing these alternatives. So does that help answer your question on the freight? Or, or do you have any follow-up questions on that?
Yeah, no, I guess it, it is helpful, because there are lots of different freight options, even within one alternative, like you can see here. But then there's also the different trial options. Is that also just to see what the public thinks? I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. We want to get comments on those. And, and let's say the freight works best with Port Option 2, for example, here. We could still do a regional trail connection along the lines of Port Option 3, so there would just be an overpass for, one of the things that could be recommended would be an overpass for bikes and Peds over the railroad, over Ship Creek, as opposed to, you know, following the freight option. It'd probably be cheaper to follow the freight option, or, you know, the freight alignment, because then you wouldn't be building two bridges. But certainly, maybe they don't have to be tied together.
Okay. And trail options, oh, sorry. As I say, trail options would also need to be ADA compliant, and they have different needs and considerations than freight, where freight's really concerned with grade and curvature, and, and has different, different concerns and priorities. And, and we want to also design a freight route that is their path of least resistance, so that they use it and don't start using other streets for freight. We want them to stay on a freight route that works for them, that's safe for what they do, because a lot of them are hauling, you know, fuel in and out of the port. So we're taking into account their grade needs and their radius needs. And all of the pathway connections would be ADA compliant. And all of the pathway connections would be ADA compliant and have their own considerations and needs that we want to make sure work for those users as well.
Yeah, the team highly encourages if there, if people have ideas for routes on a trail connection, we'd love to hear about those. That would be fantastic to get more ideas on that.
Cool. And then I think my next question was just about, if you can explain that consideration for like the main line being on Fifth Street versus Third Avenue versus Fifth and Third.
Right. So I think one of the main reasons there that we didn't do a Hyder option that also tied into the, into, like, we didn't do a Hyder option that ties into Fifth. You know, we just did the Ingra, we just showed the Ingra. That's certainly possible. I think we focused a little bit more on the Ingra routes because they are more accommodating for the locally adopted plans for what is shown on Hyder. Or what is proposed on Hyder in those plans. So the, a Greenway, a Warner F type of street. But certainly there could be some investigation into an alignment that ties Hyder over to, um, Fifth Avenue. So that's, those are really good comments and I would encourage you to leave those if that's something that the community is desiring.
No, I'm, I'm mostly just curious, like this one that either this or whoever is showing it, it is Fifth and Third and then back down to like that main Glen route. So even that piece of it.
Yeah. So the purpose of this one, it, it avoids a lot of relocation up to the north and there's vacant land there. That's part of the runway safety area that's shown in pink. Just above the North-South runway on Merrill Field. And so there was a thought, hey, can we avoid a bunch of commercial relocations and potentially historic buildings that are up to the north and swing over that way through some vacant land? So it's just an attempt to try to reduce some impacts with this one specifically. And then this one just being sort of a hybrid. Like you said, there could have been a hybrid between the Hyder alignment and Fifth Avenue, certainly. That, that could be another option.
Cool. Thanks.
Yeah. Thanks for the question.
And if you flash back and forth between them quickly, you can see the difference. So C one. So this is the first time you see something that's pretty drastically different from A B and A B combos. And this pushes the main line, um, onto 15th. And then parallels, um, 15th and then goes between Merrill Field and the Regional Hospital and then comes back and ties it at Airport Heights with a, with an interchange. It, you know, it puts complete streets and main, main streets on Ingra, Gamble, and potentially that Warner F on Hyder. Again, shows another way to connect from the Chester Creek Trail to the Ship Creek Trail. One of the things with this one that's a little bit different and challenging is that we would want freight to stay on the main line and then come out over here at Airport Heights. And then, and then use, you know, this connection to reach the port. So that's something that we're looking for their feedback on. But this one puts the main line over here on 15th. It is, um, it's, it's a depressed section again, starting about here and then daylight's kind of in here. And then it begins another depressed section in here, and that's where you can see this overbridge here and then.
Yeah, real quick, when you say here, do you mind just describing that, uh, just since we have somebody on the phone, please?
Oh, okay. Sorry. Cause I'm pointing.
You're all good.
I keep saying here, thinking people can see where I'm pointing. Okay. Sorry, I apologize.
But just, just to help, help for, for everybody. Thank you.
Um, so the depressed section begins, um, about, oh, how do we describe this slightly south of, or slightly north of 20th Avenue? And then, um, daylight's sort of the midpoint between Lake Otis and Ingra. That one's a harder one to call out because I don't have an actual street name there to, to link it to. Orca, thank you. And then it, um, begins the depressed section again. Kind of behind Regional Hospital. I guess, I don't know how else you would describe where that does. And then daylight's again, just past the, um, Ingra or the Airport Heights Glen Highway interchange.
Yeah, some cool things about this one, as far as pedestrian trail connections go. Uh, it adds a connection on to the, starting at that Airport Heights interchange and that connects to an existing pathway over near Braga. So that provides a connection that doesn't currently exist. Uh, this alternative would utilize the Northwest, existing Northway Mall property. So that would have to get purchased for this one to work. Uh, the reason that there's a bridge on that, next to the Merrill Field property there is to ensure that there's that connection to the, the Metabat connection to the recent Regional Hospital. So that's the reason for that bridge there. It also uh, provides trail connections at Orca and Juno and Carluck across 15th Avenue. So this one does a good job of, uh, connecting North and South Fairview across bridges that would go over the depressed freeway in that location. Whereas the currently, th- those are at grade connections that, so pedestrians have to wait at crosswalks for the timers and, um, and cross quite a bit of traffic there.
And I would say this is probably one of the opportunities that, you know, this one and, and the D, which we'll cover next, to remove that main line traffic out of Fairview and provide Fairview that opportunity to really connect their neighborhood, both to the North-South and East-West.
Yeah, the depressed freeway options through Fairview, so the ones we've shown on Ingra and Gamble, they only have street crossings at certain locations. So 15th Avenue, 13th Avenue. They have a pedestrian only crossing, so no cars, just pedestrians at 10th Avenue. And that's not this alternative, just to make sure we're following along, but the last, the last, the series of alternatives that went through Fairview. So, yeah, thanks, Edith. So, um, they only, I guess the point I'm getting at is they only provide crossings at certain locations. So that creates out of direction travel for pedestrians. So for people walking and biking, if they are on 12th Avenue, for example, well, they can't cross at 12th because we're showing there's cul-de-sacs there across the freeway. So they would have to either go down to 13th or up to 10th and cross at that non-motorized bridge. So it creates more out of direction travel for pedestrians, creates longer trip durations, maybe decreases the likelihood somebody would uh, bike or walk because they might think that's too inconvenient. So the bypass alternatives, they get the freeway out of Fairview, uh, out of a residential neighborhood and allow pedestrians to cross at those existing streets.
So C one, did anybody have questions on C one? Otherwise I'll jump to C two. So C one and C two are pretty similar, except for in this case, the main line will, um, parallel, parallel 15th Avenue. So it's pretty similar in that fashion. And then again, there's a interchange here at Lake Otis and, and, and then again at, at Airport Heights. Again, it provides that opportunity to connect Fairview across a North-South connection using pathways and sidewalks. It also allows Fairview to be really reconnected using, um, you know, complete streets, main streets and/or Warner Fs. We show that trail connection going down Hyder, tying into Ship Creek. It again proposes to put the freight access that they stay on the bypass on the main line until Airport Heights, and then they use First Avenue to reach, to access the port.
I have a question on this. If you could just zoom in or like, explain more the difference between C one and C two. That, like, what does that really mean or look like to have this parallel to 15th? And then, um, I noticed there, there are just a few like pedestrian sidewalk path differences. The pink line doesn't go all the way along the bypass, but pretty close on this one. And maybe it's less on C one. So can you just share that consideration to have the main line parallel to 15th rather than on 15th? What that would be like?
Um, okay. So on C one, the, the main line would be kind of, would be constructed where 15th is. So, um, you know, Lake Otis, you would get on and off at an interchange. Airport Heights, you would get on and off at interchange. We would, um, redirect the connection, um, from Easteridge, they would tie in at 16th. Kind of where we're showing this bike ped route. This is cul-de-sac here. And then for C two, 15th Avenue stays there. And the, the main line is constructed just to the south. So it would have slightly greater impacts to the properties that are to the south of 15th. It, um, allows 15th to stay continuous. So you wouldn't necessarily need to get on and off of the main line if you were trying to reach, um, this, the Fairview neighborhood. You know, some of the adjacent neighborhoods, you would still use 15th to reach them instead of having to get on and off the main line. I don't know if I'm explaining that very well.
I guess I'm trying to understand, like, if you live at East Chester Flats, which is that part of Fairview, just north of the Chester Creek down at 20th. Like, do you, how do you get out of that neighborhood if you are in a car? Do you get on to 20th Avenue and you have to get on or off the freeway? In both of these examples or how does it work?
So that's a good question, Lindsay. I'll, I'll, I'll jump in on this one. So you can't really see it very well because we're showing the non-motorized. We have, as you know, we have figures that just show the roadway connections. But in this case, so to answer your question, you, this, this provides a roadway crossing and a trail crossing at 20th Avenue that goes under the freeway. Then you have a two-way street that is on Gamble. And you can take that road up to 15th and then go from there, wherever your destination is. Another way to get out would be to go through the neighborhood to the north on those smaller gray streets there. And then you can connect up to, to the, uh, to 15th Avenue by crossing one of those bridges there at, um, Juno, Carluck or Orca. And like Edith was saying, yeah, like one of the main reasons here for this is we just wanted an alternative that didn't require vehicles to jump on and off 15th for such a short distance. To get onto 15th, if, when the freeway alignment was on 15th, on the existing 15th, it required a lot of ramps over at the 15th Avenue interchange. And if we just kept 15th functioning has, as it is now and put the freeway next to it, you didn't need any ramps there, any vehicle ramps. And so it, it reduced a lot. We didn't have to put ramps through the neighborhood. We could just do a depressed, and we can just do a depressed freeway through here with over crossings to try to reconnect that North and South Fairview there.
So the C two option is, it's, um, it's also depressed just south. Or sorry, north of 20th and then daylight's at Orca. And then it's, it's depressed again, kind of behind Regional Hospital. And then daylight's again, just, um, north of the Airport Heights interchange. And it's, and like Galen was saying, it's kind of hard to see in these figures. On, on the project webpage, you can open these maps and really zoom in. But there's a ramp that you can just barely see on C one. So there's ramps coming out of like Orca to get on. There's ramps coming out of Merrill Field and at Lake Otis so that it, it adds a little bit more infrastructure to, to get on and off the main line for that. Like Galen was saying, it's just a really short duration. So by paralleling 15th, it eliminates some of those and lets you just use 15th like you would now.
And was there, were there specific connections there that you had asked about? You said some of the pedestrian connections are shown on C one and not C two or vice versa. Was there a specific one that you had a question on that we could speak to?
Yeah, I mean, I'm still, I'm still trying to, I am flipping between maps, trying to figure out how to decipher the, the freeway ramps and everything that you guys just are describing.
C one, the curvature that comes from the Seward Highway onto 15th is in a slightly different location. So when we parallel 15th to the south, that curve gets a little bit flatter. So those sidewalk connections get extended a little bit further to the south. That's a little bit what looks different in that quadrant that's, north of 20th and east of Ingra. There's that quadrant there. So the curve between C one and C two is a little bit flatter. And so it, we extend those sidewalk bike and ped connections a little bit further to the south to tie into the streets. So if I flip back and forth between like, here's C two, you see the curve like flattens. And so we have to extend a little bit further. And then we also recreate those, um, sidewalk connections. Like now they're on the north side of 15th because we moved. So C one pushes that curve up a little bit to the, to the north and then C two pushes a little bit to the south.
Yeah. And I was, I was, um, referring to the pink path sidewalk like around, near Alaska Regional. So like, yeah, some of, so C two, you have the pink pathway that kind of cuts behind Alaska Regional hugs Merrill Field a little bit. But then some of the other, by the other bypass option, that's C one, it's just a little different. And then D, even more different, like it, it, it wraps, you know, all the way around Airport Heights. So just trying to, I guess what considerations you guys had and putting those different options out there so that we can think about what we like best. But I'm just curious, like for this one.
I think those are interchangeable. Yeah, those are, those are good observations, Lindsay. I think they're interchangeable and we, some of these, like the port connection that you pointed out earlier, we show, we, we kind of had the room on the figure to show multiple options. But if we were to do that here, it just would get way too busy and confusing. So I think some of these you can kind of pick and choose. Well, it would be better to go along this route or it'd be better to go along that route. So yeah, those are great comments and, uh, we would love to hear feedback on preferred alternatives or preferred routes there.
Great. Thanks.
I think on one of them, we kind of thought, well, they'll, they would ride or bike or walk along, um, 15th and onto DeBar. And then they would use Airport Heights to connect in at the interchange. And then that would give them access to the pathways that parallel the Glen Highway and tie them into Mountain View. And then C two is kind of just connect them and let, and then there's a pedestrian facility, bike facility that parallels the, the, the bypass instead of using Airport Heights. But they both do the same thing. They connect you to Mountain View and they connect you to the pathway that parallels the Glen Highway.
Yeah. What's nice about alternatives, C one and C two that we've looked at so far is they do provide the potential for a more direct connection from these northeast neighborhoods or these more eastern neighborhoods down to the Chester Creek Greenbelt. So that was one of our goals. Looks like there was just a comment there about Lake Otis missing a pathway on one of the sides. And I, I'm not sure, is that, is that existing conditions or was that a comment about the alternatives?
Um, it's Airport Heights Drive and that's existing condition. So
Oh, yeah.
Like you just said, people can route up Airport Heights Drive, but it's not really possible, um, depending on where you're going with the missing sidewalk.
Okay. Yeah, that's a great point.
And this is Chelsea. Sorry, Edith, I'll jump in here real quick. I did only schedule this meeting for an hour, but I know we also, or the committee was hoping to potentially make some comments. Um, I guess I just want to pause the presentation real quick and check and see if committee members have more time. I can stay as long as you need me to, um, or if, um, you all would prefer to end closer to five, um, when we were scheduled and then, pick up this conversation at a. And then, um, pick up this conversation at another time for the actual comments.
And as info, we have just one more slide.
Thanks.
How about if we extend to 5:15 and then we'll, at 5:15, we'll see where we're at.
Sounds great. Thanks. Just wanted to check in on that.
Uh, okay, so alternative D is another bypass alternative. It uses a viaduct or an elevated section over the Chester Creek Trail. Um, it starts kind of off of Fireweed. Um, and it elevates over Chester Creek. And then it, um, I'm trying to, cause I'm trying to verbally describe. It, it continues kind of on a northeast trajectory and then, um, ties in at 15th and Lake Otis. And then is, borders Merrill Field behind the Regional Hospital again. And then has that a very similar interchange design at Lake Otis. Or I'm sorry, I keep saying Lake Otis, at Airport Heights and the Glen Highway. Um, it does similar things. It has, um, trail connections from Chester Creek to Ship Creek. It has that Warner, it has, um, the complete streets and the main streets for Gamble and Ingra. It, it takes a lane reduction on Fifth and Sixth Avenue and makes those complete streets. Um, it does again, show that freight connection coming off of Airport Heights and Glen Highway, um, going under commercial. And then, um, using, uh, Whitney Road to get to the port. Um, and then again, it shows a potential, uh, Ship Creek Trail connection that, um, comes off of Hyder, off the Warner. And then kind of goes zigzags down the hill.
Yeah, so this one would have new trail connections that go through that pink runway safety area along it on both sides. So that could be an improvement to tra- trail connections in that within the study area that connect different parts down more eastern, northeastern down to the Chester Creek Green Belt.
And this one does show that pathway sidewalk being developed on Airport Heights that, that we missed on the D, the D2, D1, or the C1, C2 alternative. And again, parallels.
Just kind of adding another option.
To tie in, yeah.
Does it go under or over 15th?
Goes under.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, so this, this kind of peach color is the, is the bridge section. So that's the viaduct.
That, that was a mistake. It goes over, it goes over at this spot. So it goes over 15th.
Yeah.
Over 15th and then over Merrill Field Drive on that south connection to Merrill Field. And then it drops down to go under the connection for the medevac to Regional Hospital. That's where that pink bridge is shown. And then it goes under Airport Heights Drive.
So it's elevated coming around, up somewhere between Fireweed and 20th. It's elevated for the people that are on the phone. It remains elevated, um, until you're out of the, the Chester Creek Green Belt. And then it's at grade, um, until you get there behind Regional. And then it's that depressed section, like Galen was saying, so we can maintain the medevac. Um, and then it is, uh, Daylights and ties into existing again, just north of the Airport Heights Glen Highway interchange. And then the freight route is depressed also under commercial drive.
You know, what's interesting about alternative D is it mirrors the, the, the thought behind the preferred route for the 1961 road connection project, which was to bypass Fairview and downtown and to route traffic that wanted to go to Midtown and then out of Bankery, south, south. So it's, it, it was interesting, but that was the preferred route, but they went with the cheaper route through Fairview at the time.
Oh, that's really interesting. So it looks like there were some questions on the interim alternative, so I'll just run through that. Is there a slide for that, Edith?
Um, let me check. No, not, and I can, let me check the slide that is not part of the presentation and then I could show that if I find it.
Yeah, I'll just get started since we're, we're short on time. So thanks for bringing up the interim alternative. So what that would be, because it would take a while to secure funding, get designs, potentially acquire right of way, um, do the environmental document portion of this. We think that there is potential, well, we know there's potential for looking at an option of reducing lanes on the Ingrah-Gamble couplet. So that would look like, it would still be a couplet, it would still be one way, but we take a lane away. Uh, this has been looked at, it was looked at as part of the Fairview redevelopment plan, or the Gamble Main Street redevelopment plan. And the, that would reduce traffic lanes. It wouldn't reduce the amount of traffic on those roads, still close to 40,000 vehicles a day through a neighborhood. So the team is doing traffic modeling for all of these alternatives, including a no, no action alternative, which wouldn't include any reduction in lanes on Ingrah and Gamble. But we're also doing an MTP alternative that would include lane reductions on Ingrah-Gamble and see if that can handle the traffic without causing too much congestion, congestion or breaking the system. Uh, and, and if it does, we're going to see how, if it does work, we're going to see how long that works for. So how many years? We're going to look at interim years, but we're also going to look at the, all of these options will model for the traffics that's projected out to 2050. And we'll do that, of course, with the interim option as well. What that'll do is it will reduce the number of lanes pedestrians would have to cross. It would also add room, a little bit of room, you know, reducing by a lane only gets you about 11 more feet. So five and a half feet on either side, but that's, that's more room for snow storage. That's more potentially room for a bike lane on either side that could be used for snow storage in the winter, bike lane in the summer a, as an example. Um, and could potentially add a lot of bang for your buck in a short period of time. So those are some, that's something we're really excited to be looking into. Lindsay, did you want me to expand on that at all?
No, I just wanted to make sure that was part of the, um, discussion for some of the, in the near term. We're bicycle pedestrian advisory committee and we want changes sooner than later.
Yeah, thank you.
We're looking on, um, online to see if we can find a, a slide for the interim.
Sure, Emily, did you have a question?
Yeah, kind of a general question, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, so on the maps that you're showing and the maps that are on the website, it's really easy to see what's being added, but it's not clear what's being demolished for the, you know, the routes where, where the highway would be placed where there's currently not a highway. You know, it's not all vacant land. So I think it would be really helpful if you could provide the satellite view that people could toggle on and off on those maps just to see, you know, where's the housing, where's the neighborhoods, where's the parks, where's all this stuff that's going to be destroyed for some of these alternatives? Cause otherwise it's really hard to tell when it just looks like a blank map.
Right, yeah, and that's a really good comment. So we, we appreciate that comment. I think you've kind of hit the nail on the head there. There would be, some of these alternatives would have quite a bit of impacts to businesses and local housing. So it's important to take that into account when we're, um, analyzing these alternatives.
And have you looked at that in terms of the numbers? Like on the website, there's kind of some bar charts that just show relative heights of bars without numbers on them. Um, have you quantified what those impacts are?
That's going to all be part of our alternative screening process. So for now, we just wanted to choose some alignments, really get the community talking about what they prefer. But we understand that a huge part of that, um, conversation would involve number of relocations, business relocations, private residential relocations, things like that. So that's all going to be part of the alternative screening process and will be, uh, published online. And we're going to have another public open house to go over all of that. So we'll definitely have all that quantified. And part of that strategy of just showing the bar chart was just more of a qualitative assessment, uh, to show the trade-offs between each alternative. None of them are the, there's no silver bullet. If there was, you know, we would have done this a long time ago. Uh, so just showing the trade-offs between each of the alternatives, like some impact parks more, some impact residential or, uh, business, businesses more, those sort of things. Some, some make it harder for communities to have, uh, uh, economic prosperity or they might have more cohesive, community cohesion impacts, things like that, or safety. So just wanting to show the trade-offs, but no, there, there's no quantified, um, quantification involved in, in that.
Okay, thanks. Sure, yeah, I'll look forward to the rest of that. Um, so you say relocation, does that imply that there will be, you know, a new neighborhood built somewhere else? Or new buildings built for the businesses who are being displaced by this?
Yeah, the way that works is there's a federal law, there's a process. So if a parcel is impacted, uh, if a certain percentage of that parcel is impacted, I think it's based on the value of it, uh, then they would have to be relocated and there are a lot of requirements for that. So, um, it's not necessarily that we would build a new neighborhood anywhere else that the, the state wouldn't be involved in with that. They would basically pay and assist each of the current occupants of that parcel to, uh, a fair market value to relocate. So they would get the money to, uh, to build a bill. I'm not, I'm not an expert at this process, but I'm just trying to paraphrase it. They would get them, they would basically get the money to build their own new building for a business. Or, um, they would get, uh, money and services to relocate into a new house. And that house would have to, um, and has a lot of rules associated with it, um, in terms of, um, you know, has to meet code and, and be suitable for their family and things like that. So that's called the Uniform Relocation Act.
Okay, yeah, I was going to speak to that a little bit too. I was going to say that, you know, it's done, it's, it, in some cases, it can actually be, um, I know that being relocated can be really traumatic, but in some cases it, it, it's not just a short term. They provide, it's, they cover like six months of the, of the rent. It includes all of the moving expenses. They go in and, and evaluate and make sure that, that it's, um, like Galen was saying, that it meets their, the family's needs. In some cases, sometimes, um, families are finding that, that this sum that they get actually can be the opportunity for them to use as a down payment on a home and actually become homeowners. So sometimes this, this process, while it is, is a huge change, um, isn't necessarily always, um, negative in the long run. Sometimes it provides them the opportunity to, to be able to become homeowners.
Okay, thanks. Um, it does seem challenging under our current situation of really scarce housing stock. I mean, if there's not a vacant place for them to move into or to buy, or, you know, kind of affordable under, under normal situations. Um, yeah, that sounds like a big challenge. Um, I don't want to monopolize.
Absolutely.
I don't want to monopolize the rest of our time, so I have one more suggestion and then I'll turn off my mic. Um, just, so as we were going through those maps, you were pointing at or describing where the highway would be depressed. And I think it would be really helpful to have that color coded on the maps, um, so that we can kind of see where that is as we're looking at the website.
Galen, I couldn't show, um, oh, I see what you're saying, have them color coded versus the callouts, okay.
Yeah, it, well, it's a great suggestion and we tried to trim down the presentation. We have maps for the roadway, uh, alternatives that describe those and it, and it shows where they're depressed and, or not. And they're not color coded, that would be a great idea, but, um, we just showed the bike and pedestrian alternatives on this one. So the figures online show that information in more, uh, detail, but I, I like that option or that suggestion a lot. Thank you.
Okay, I have been looking on the online version as well, and I'm not seeing where it's showing what's depressed and what's not. So maybe that's me, or maybe it just needs to be a little bit more obvious.
I can, like, the hair, I can, can you, I just switched my screen, cause it's still visible.
Yep.
Okay, um, so there's these little callouts. So here it says Viaduct Bridge, um, and then it says begin depressed freeway. And then it, it'll say end depressed freeway. Begin depressed industrial road. So the, these are the little at grade. And then, um, let's see here, flipping through these really quick. And these are those, those trade-off bar graphs that you were mentioning, um, in non-motorized.
At the, at the online open house with the interactive maps that you can zoom in on, they don't have the callouts. So there's no way to tell there kind of what's depressed or not.
Yeah, that's correct. You're, you're right. That's a good point. Thank you.
Okay, that's all from me. Thank you so much.
Hi, is it time for a public comment?
Um, if the committee is done discussing, and normally we give the committee time to discuss before a public comment.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions from committee members? So I do have a question. When are comments due? What's the deadline? If we wanted to make comments?
Um, so the public comment period closes April 7th.
So we could, volunteers from the committee could work with you to draft a letter with co- potential comments in it. Then we could discuss it and vote on it at our next meeting.
So Darrell, the challenge and the reason why we, um, had this special meeting for this presentation, um, was that we, uh, the B-PAC comments need to go through the Technical Advisory and Policy Committee, um, before submitting, um, her, our, you know, policies and procedures as an organization. And so, um, I think I may have heard the project committee, um, provide a little bit of leeway to the freight advisory committee. And Galen or Edith, you can, um, let me know if I'm out of step here. But I think if you wanted to do that, um, and then we could bring it to, if you wanted to do that for our next meeting, which is, um, March 11th now. Um, and then that would mean that those comments would go through the Technical Advisory and Policy Committees at their April meetings. So they would go to the project team about a week or so late, um, if that's.
That's totally fine. We, we would love your comments. So yeah, thank you very much. We understand it's a tight deadline and all the, all the different steps that have to take place, so.
So.
But you can also unofficially comment as a member of the public if you want to as well, too, so.
Correct, correct. So, uh, Lindsay said she would like to work on drafting a letter. Is there any other member of the committee who would like to work on that?
Yeah, this is Emily. I can help with that. And I think it would be fantastic if we do put something together and vote on it and hopefully send some comments forward.
All right, so, so Lindsay and Emily have volunteered to work with you on, uh, uh, Chelsea to, uh, uh, on drafting a letter with comments and then we can vote on it, discuss it and vote on it at our March 11th meeting, if that works for everyone.
That works for me.
Perfect, cause there was a lot of information. I mean, I really, having lived in Fairview for almost 40 years, I really appreciate the, the presentation and, and, and there's a really robust, uh, variety of alternatives. So I think, uh, as a resident and as a member of the committee, I'm going to have to do a little more research.
Thank you.
So any other comments or questions from committee members? So any other comments or questions from committee members? So then we'll move to public comments.
Hi, this is Sarah. I'm calling in from Eagle River today. And I really appreciate the committee's time and energy. It sounds like you have a lot on your plate right now. But I wanted to remind you about the meetings coming up for the tip amendment two. We are dangerously close to having zero projects in Eagle River again for the AMATs twenty fifty. And we're specifically looking at the Eagle River Road Pathway Extension Project that has been designed for many, many years. And we're all getting really fed up with not getting some projects out here. So I wanted to remind you that that's coming up. It's definitely on Eagle River's radar right now. So you're going to get getting a lot of comments on it and appreciate any support you can throw our way out here.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other public comments?
This is Galen. I know I'm not part of the public, but I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Emily's concern about not being able to tell what was depressed or recessed. On that online page, there is a narrative about each alternative. And in that narrative, it does describe where what's depressed versus at grade or on the surface. Now, that's definitely not as good of or easy to discern as color code or things like that, but hopefully that'll help a little bit in before we can get those up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, public, committee?
This is Chelsea. I just wanted to say thank you for your flexibility with moving our March meeting and for all the quick responses on that. Apologies for not flagging that conflict before we had our meeting posted, but thanks for being flexible as a group.
Well, I appreciate you pointing it out. I'm going to be at the other meeting that night.
Yeah, I appreciated that, too. I hadn't heard about that other meeting, so I'm glad I can go to both. And yeah, also really appreciate the committee's flexibility in meeting today and changing that meeting. And yeah, there's lots of good stuff going on.
Well, if there's nothing else, I guess we could call it an evening and everybody could head home and have dinner.
Thanks, Darrell. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
To the Seward Glen team.
Thank you all.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Have a good night.